Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I'm Andrea Mulrain. I'm a board member for the League of Women Voters of Lackawanna County. And we're delighted that you're here with us this evening to hear from all of the candidates for the office of Lackawanna County Commissioner. We'll start this evening with a debate with the candidates, the Republican candidates, and then follow that an hour later with the candidates that are running on the Democratic ticket. So this, again, is a primary election, so you'll vote by party, and that's why we're doing the debates separately this evening. Before I get into everything else that I need to tell you about, I just want to do a quick intro of our candidates. Lorraine Cummings, Bill Jones, and Charlie Spano are on the Republican ticket, and they'll be talking with you first this evening, and we'll go over their bios in a little more depth in just a minute. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization, and we work throughout the year on issues pertaining to, specifically our local league, pertaining to elections and voter education. We are an all-volunteer organization, so we invite you to join us. I believe in the program there is an membership application for the League, and if you are so inclined on the way out and you support the work that we do, we ask you to make a financial contribution. There'll be someone standing at the door with a basket. A couple of things for this particular election. There are quite a few judicial races on the ballot this year. Justice of the Supreme Court, Judge of the Superior Court, Judge of the Commonwealth Court, Judge of the Court of Common Pleas are all on the ballot this year. The League of Women Voters of Pennsylvania is hosting, in conjunction with Pennsylvanians for Modern Courts, debates with the Democratic candidates and also the Republican candidates for the Pennsylvania Supreme Court. And the first debate will be held tomorrow evening, April 29th, at 5:00 p.m., and that's with the Democratic candidates, and then followed on Thursday, also at 5:00 p.m. with the Republican candidates. If you can't see it live on PCN, the Pennsylvania Cable Network, check their listings for broadcast times after April 30th. It's a great way. I always find it difficult for me personally to stay in touch with all of the candidates that we vote for, and I always find that these are very helpful in learning more about the Supreme Court candidates, especially when I don't get out to a lot of events. So that's a little bit of information for you. The other races that the League will be covering this year, the Scranton School Board candidates will have interviews with all of those candidates. We're taping them this Saturday on May 1st, and we're also taping interviews with the candidates for Scranton City Controller and also for Lackawanna County Clerk of Judicial Records. And all of those interviews will take place on Saturday this week, and Mark from ECTV tells me that he's going to air them right away, and I know that Dan will be working on getting them available on the League of Women Voters website, which is LWV.Lackawanna.org. And I think the date that we're looking to get them up by is May 8th, if I'm not, May 8th, I'm told. So look for all of that information. We hope that it will help you be an informed and engaged voter on Election Day. One last thing, the last day to request an absentee ballot is May 12th, so if you're going to be out of town on Election Day, you want to make sure that you get that taken care of. So with that, our event this evening, again, is for the Lackawanna County Commissioner race. None of the questions have been given to our candidates in advance. We drew straws for who would answer the first question first and who would give the last, or I'm sorry, the first closing statement. And all of the questions, at this point, will have a two-minute time restriction to it, so we ask the candidates that they give their answers within two minutes, and we'll allow each one of them up to three one-minute rebuttals that they can use at their discretion throughout the evening. They will be allowed, each candidate will be allowed a two-minute closing statement at the end as well. So with that, let's get into the first question of the evening, and the person who will answer the first question first is Charlie Spano. Oh, and I'm sorry, I didn't do the bios, I apologize. So let's start with Lorraine Cummings. Lorraine is from Old Forge. She attended Marywood University, and she holds a license as a practical nurse. She is a nurse and a small-business owner of Lormar Home Care and Staffing Services. She ran for Congress in 2012, garnering 40% of the vote, and is active in Pennsylvania politics. She was elected to the Pennsylvania Republican State Committee and was the top vote-getter for that office, and she's been involved with and recognized by quite a few groups of Republican and women's organizations, and she is the mother of four adult children and a grandmother of four. So, Lorraine, welcome this evening.
Thank you.
Bill Jones is from South Abington Township. He holds a Bachelor of Science degree in Human Development from Penn State University. In 2007, Bill was elected to serve as auditor of South Abington Township and has served as auditor since. Additionally, he has had the opportunity to work in the energy industry as a public affairs specialist with the Tennessee Gas Pipeline Company, a Kinder Morgan Company. As a public affairs specialist, Bill had the opportunity to represent TGP in the northeastern United States, and he now works in a public affairs firm as an associate where he provides public expertise to several of the firm's clients. Bill is the son of Attorney Bill Jones and Dr. Margaret Billings Jones, and he has four brothers. Welcome, Bill. And last but not least, is Charlie Spano. Charlie is from Scranton. He holds a Master's Degree in Elementary Administration from the University of Scranton, a Bachelor's in Education and History from Wilkes University, and he's a graduate of West Scranton High School. He has 34 years of helping Republicans. He attended five conventions, and he chaired the 9/11 Memorial Committee and Flag Day Committee, Scranton Unico, and a whole host of additional organizations as well, and I know that Charlie's wife, Mary Rose, is in the audience with us this evening, so welcome Charlie and welcome Mary Rose.
Thank you.
And with that, we will actually start with Charlie and our very first question. And my question for you is, can we find the right piece of paper here? Describe for us a major accomplishment in the private or public sector that is relevant to the position that you're seeking, and what distinguishes you? How does it distinguish you from the other candidates?
I think that the, there's two answers to that, as far as I'm concerned. There's the political elective position, and then there are the private positions, or the nonprofits. I started the 9/11 Memorial Committee, for example, by reaching out to the former county commissioners to secure a site where the memorial could exist. I did that because I didn't see that there was anyone around, and I sort of knew that there were some connections with some victims of that day to this area. I had to organize a committee, exert some leadership, raise funds. In a lot of respects, a lot of those skills translate over to the position of county commissioner. In the elective sphere, I was elected to the Home Rule Study Commission of the city of Scranton a few years back, and as one of the 11 members of that commission, I advocated for, and I'm proud to say that I voted, for cutting Scranton's taxes and imposing term limits on Scranton officials. Those are two things that I would bring to the fight at the commissioner level, to see how we could improve our tax structure, as well as creating term limits for the commissioners, if not other elected officials.
Thank you. Charlie, Lorraine, the question goes to you.
So you just want to know about the private sector, is that what the question was?
Public or private, tell us something that pertains to the office that you're seeking, and what makes you, how does that make you different from your opponents?
Well, I had the privilege of being employee-trained and mentored by some of the greatest business leaders in Lackawanna County, two of which are Michael Kelly and James Blumer. They helped me and gave me a position as administrator in their buildings and taught me all of the information I needed for leading in the areas of personal care and assisted living. I went on to work under Evelyn Hannan, who was one of the leading advocates for women in the workforce and promoting us within. I ended up being her total quality management trainer, and I did all of our billing for Medicare and Medicaid. After that, I came here to the University of Scranton and went under the Small Business Development Center, where I was mentored for three years. So I thank the university and Small Business Development Center, because now you're looking at a woman who's had her business for 16 years, so you can look at me as an accomplishment. I think what I bring to the county is some common sense and the ability to budget, as well as the fact that I've had up to 60 or more employees that I've had to manage and train, and I've also led them on to further their career. That's where I think that I have the difference in other candidates.
Thank you. Bill, the question goes to you.
2007, I was elected as auditor of South Abington Township, and I saw that as a great accomplishment. That was something that my mother had held that position before me. I went on to hold that position, I currently hold it. From there, I went on into the oil and gas industry.
Bill, I'm sorry, can you pull that closer, please?
Yeah, sorry.
Thank you.
I've gone into the oil and gas industry, and I've had the opportunity to represent Tennessee Gas Pipeline Company in many stakeholder meetings. I've been involved with high-level negotiations in the hundreds of millions of dollars with that company, with elected officials from governors to the United States senators, congressmen in local municipalities. I'll be able to bring my private business experience into the commissioner's office. I think that's something that we need to focus on. We need somebody in there that's going to be a champion for the taxpayer, and that's why Lorraine and myself are running as a combined team endorsed by the Republican Party of Lackawanna County. And we believe that we can reduce taxes, cut the unemployment rate, and also cut the debt. You know, Lackawanna County's in a $200 million debt, and it's not going away. We need to put together a fiscal plan that's going to get us out of it. With Lorraine Cummings, I think with our private business experience, we will be successful at doing that, and we'll turn the corner.
Okay, thank you. The next question, Lorraine, will go to you first, please. The Times Tribune is writing a four-part story on the county commissioners, as I'm sure you know, and so the headline from the April 28th, or I'm sorry, from the April 19th story is "Budget Taxes Loom as Top Commissioner Issues." So I want you to give us some information about how you think you would deal with the budget issue, and please be specific, and telling us that you will cut wasteful spending is not specific and therefore not an acceptable answer. Two minutes, and the question goes to you.
Well, as someone who's been dealing with the problems in the county for about seven years, we've been attending the meetings and looking at the budgets, I think that some of the areas that they did cut spending in were effective, and Commissioner Washo and Commissioner O'Brien did do a fairly decent job. However, I think now we could do a better job at it, especially since we're bringing in such a high tax rate. Some of the areas that I was looking at and Bill and I were talking about was the economic development. I think that that is a redundant office, and I think that that's something that commissioners themselves can be doing on their own. We don't need to hire somebody to go to different area meetings and not throughout the district to attend and learn what's happening. If we can't make them ourselves, we can get the minutes, so I don't believe that that's a position that's required. Some of the other areas that I'm looking at in my own opinion for cutting waste and expenses is within the administration itself, because that's basically where our taxes are going. Everything else is coming in from the state and federal. So I'm basing my thoughts on the taxes that are charged to Lackawanna County residents, not the state and federal money that's coming in.
Okay, thank you. Bill, the question goes to you, but would you please pull that microphone over right in front of you?
What was the question?
The question is that the Times Tribune is doing a four-part series. The article from April 19th says "Budget and Taxes Loom as Top Commissioner Issues." So tell us about why the budget is such an issue, and be specific about what your resolution would be for that. Cutting wasteful spending is not specific and therefore not an acceptable answer.
Okay. As Lorraine touched upon, there's an economic development office, which is a duplication of services. It's a half-a-million-dollar budget line item, which we would remove. The state, the new current administration under the governor has created an economic development office. It's called an action team, so I don't think that we need to be in that area providing those services. As commissioners, we'll be out in front. We'll bring in new revenue. We're going to bring in new jobs that are going to come in here and pay taxes. New companies coming into this area, creating jobs, and we're going to create a climate that is conducive for new businesses. We're going to cut down on debt services. Right now, the county's in $200 million worth of debt. When you take out debt like that, you have to pay debt services on your money. It's a substantial sum of money. People don't realize that. We are in financial trouble, and if we pay that down, we'll get rid of the interest, and we'll be able to put that money towards the budget and lower your taxes.
Thank you. Charlie, the question to you, please.
Sure. My budgetary background includes the time I spent as an acting principal in the school district where I had to handle the school budget. As a manager of census recruiting for the United States Census in 2010, I supervised about 35 to 50 employees, and I had to make sure that their payroll forms met our budgetary restrictions. And as a director in the Pennsylvania Department of Education, supervised about 50 employees in a $100 million budget. To be specific about what would happen were I to become one of the commissioners elected in November would be a couple of things, large and symbolic. The symbolic one would be to eliminate the newsletter that comes out late with the wrong information in it. The larger things would be to look into and push for consolidating county functions in a single or at least two spaces. Right now, the idea that county functions should be spread over a half a dozen buildings or so is an idea whose time has passed and maybe shouldn't have ever come about. The combining of budgets of the buildings into a single space or at least two spaces will consolidate and eliminate a lot of the maintenance costs, utility costs, those kinds of things, which will be a huge saving right there. And I agree with Lorraine and Bill about the debt service. Once you start cutting expenses, you can start paying off your debt. Those are the things that keep businesses out, whether you have an economic development office or not, and unnecessary offices like that should definitely be looked at to eliminate them.
Okay, thank you. The next question will go first to Bill. So again, going back to the Times Tribune and their four-part series, this week's series is speaking, or article, is addressing reassessment. I will tell you that in preparation for this evening, I went back to my notes from four years ago, and I'm asking the same question that I asked four years ago. So that question is, discuss your position on the county's tax reassessment that is in progress but stalled. Two minutes.
Well, I am for reassessment, but right now, the county does not have the funds available to do a reassessment. I think we need to see what the state does, with the current administration talking about a Senate bill that'll roll back property tax. But what I am for is I'm for local municipalities and school districts going out and assessing properties. Right now, they have the ability to go out, identify properties, and reassess the value on the property so that they're paying their fair share. Where we saw a positive example of that was in the North Pocono School District in Covington Township. There was a Sears building. They went out, the municipality and the school district went out, they reassessed the correct value of the building and brought in additional revenue for all parties, the municipality, the school district, and the county. So I would help the local municipality and the school districts by providing them with the tax information and implore them to go out and find these buildings and add them to the tax roll. Also, with the gentleman that collects our taxes, I would provide the services that he needed and the resources to go out and increase the tax collection rate. Currently, we are at a good rate, but we could always do better. We want people to pay their fair share, and we don't want to have the burden going on to the taxpayers that are paying their fair share. That's how I would address that problem.
Thank you. Charlie, the question to you, please.
Well, generally, I do favor reassessment because the 40-year gap between the last time and this, and now, is only skewing the foundation of our tax structure even more. However, having said that, we must move carefully on it, because we've got to find out, first of all, where did the money go for the aborted reassessment from a few years back, and what alternative ways can we proceed at a less cost? The suggestion of having municipalities take on the burden may or may not be a feasible prospect. Some might be willing to do it, others might not. The leadership that I could bring to the commissioner's office would certainly work to enhance that possibility. The other thing is that when everybody talks about reassessment, you get, right away, people get very nervous. They wonder about their tax rates, or their tax is going to go up. One of the things that needs to be done is that we have to have full communication with our citizens. They have to feel they're getting a fair shake and have an honest dialogue with them so that they, everybody would understand what the consequences are, not just leap forward and say, you know, as of January, whatever, we're going to do X. This is a bigger project than it appears on the surface. The other thing is that for the last two years, my county taxes, I checked my bills today, have been exactly the same to the penny. If they can do it in two years, why can't we do that in four, so we can cut our expenses, consolidate our buildings, and show the leadership from the county commissioners that we so desperately deserve?
Thank you. Lorraine, the question to you, please address the issue of reassessment.
I'm for reassessment, but it has to be done when, after Bill and I are elected and our leadership role takes place where we're lowering taxes and we bring the mileage back down to where it should be, and get rid of that, at least the 4% increase that happened, and possibly even further down with the 38% increase that we had. And at that point, reassessment's not going to be as scary for everyone in our county, and it'll be weighed out by that fact. Once that, once we lower our taxes, then we can go ahead with reassessment, and people won't be as fearful, in my opinion.
Okay, thank you. The next question will go to Charlie first. So we talked a little bit about the economic development in the county. I want you to focus specifically on, how do you feel about the overall importance and impact of arts and culture and education programs, and how is that, or is it not, an economic driver?
Having been an educator for 35 years until I retired, I would be certainly in favor of education, and there's always been a tug and an argument in education about, do we cut the arts program, do we do this with the music program, and so forth. The arts and culture programming going on now in the county is vibrant. It is a worthy endeavor, and where it can be accomplished without enormous amounts of tax support, it ought to be encouraged. So I think the arts and culture does attract people. When we travel, 90% of the time that we would go anywhere would be to go someplace where there's fun and interesting things to do, rather than just, you know, touring a static building, for example. So the more vibrant scene we could have for arts and culture, the more attractive an area would be. But if you don't have the environment for taxes, because of taxation, businesses or people who might come won't necessarily stay. So having written a book, I'm all in favor of arts and culture, and that's where my experience would lead me to go.
Okay, thank you. Lorraine, the question to you, what's the impact of arts and culture as an economic engine for the county?
Well, I always believe in education. That's something that's huge in my book, and I think we need to look more towards junior achievement and things like that, where they're showing different areas of our culture and our area. I've watched some of the arts and cultures that have gone on through the county, and they're wonderful. You have to say that bringing kids and getting them more involved in what's happening in our community is absolutely wonderful, but as Charlie stated, when we're $250 million in debt, that seems to be an issue. And I think once Bill and I take office and increase the money that we have coming in through job creation and in our environment, we'll be able to do more programs like that.
Bill, same question to you.
Having been in big business meetings where companies are looking to relocate to specific areas, I know that this is a very important program. They look, they look for these programs for their employees. They want to move into an area that's going to be very friendly, user-friendly, to their employees. Having been in those meetings, I would want to expand the program with Lorraine, but what we need to do is we need to create a climate, and we need to create a climate for job growth. If we bring the jobs in and we have the taxes lower, we're going to have more funds available to put towards these programs, and these are programs that actually drive in businesses, you know? And we need to go out there as commissioners and take a leading role, and bring the businesses in and tell them about our program.
Okay, thank you. So, Lorraine, the next question goes to you first, and I want to stay on the issue of economic engines in the county, and this is a question I usually ask of city candidates, but it's very appropriate for county candidates. There are eight colleges and universities located in Lackawanna County, and yet people will say, "We're not a college town," or "We're not a college county." Are we a college county? And if we are, how can the county government connect better, or should they connect better, with the colleges and universities? What's the role for colleges and universities within Lackawanna County?
Well, obviously, the role is to educate our citizens and bring in more people that are diverse to our area. You know, we have a tremendous amount of colleges, and I'm not sure who does not feel that we are that, but, you know, just drive down Jefferson Avenue and, you know, Mulberry, and you'll see. But I'm not sure what your question would pertain to the county. I guess I would want to know, where would you like me to go with that, other than approval?
How can the county work with the colleges? What would they bring? What can colleges and universities bring to the county, to a relationship with the county?
Geez, I'd have to think about it. I guess I would think, just joining up and, like we're talking about with the arts and culture program, you know, maybe the county can utilize some of the space that, like they do now, for free rooms for these programs to be held in. Maybe with areas like the Chamber of Commerce and different areas that we can bring in business seminars and interesting ideas like that. Small Business Development Center had a lot of things like that as well, where they held our own services, and they were all free of charge. So I guess that's where I would go with those type of ideas.
Okay. Bill, question to you.
Currently, the county has a grant program where they give the University of Scranton funds to help students that have not graduated from high school. They help them get a job. They help them put together resumes. They help them go out and perform well on job interviews. So I'd like to see a program, something similar to that, expand. Let's do that with all the universities here. We have people from all different communities, from Madison Township up in Carbondale or Jefferson Township. If we can have students go out and educate these, you know, people that need to get jobs and how that they can successfully get jobs, it's a program that we could explore. Also, I think we could put together a committee with professors from all different universities and colleges in this area to tackle some of the problems. You know, as commissioners, when you're elected, you don't have the answer to every problem. You need to go out and you need to counsel, seek counsel from individuals and experts in that industry, and we have a tremendous amount of experts in several different industries. We have Lackawanna College with the oil and gas industry. They're becoming a leader, and we could do a partnership with them. We have many private businesses partnering with them, and I think the county could partner with them and see how we can bring in jobs in that industry. We have Keystone College that's very involved with the farming industry. You know, I think that we could use them as a, you know, we could use them and bounce ideas off of them, of how we could bring in more jobs related to that industry. With the University of Scranton, and we have a medical college, we have some very smart people here, and we need to utilize what we have.
Thank you. Charlie, the question goes to you.
I've thought about this before, that the county, as a government entity, should seek closer relations with the colleges and universities to utilize their expertise, the people on their staff, the research facilities, the work product that comes from places like the Science Department here at the university. But aside from that, and aside from a closer partnership with the colleges and universities, would also be the opportunity of those institutions to help train county workers, to enhance their skills. When we talked about a little bit ago of consolidating buildings, we also have to consider the possibility of upgrading and enhancing the computerization and access to records where privacy is not an issue. Maybe the people at the colleges could develop applications. I know there's a fiber optic system being constructed or is under construction in the county. We could do that. We could use their business expertise. We could, as I mentioned before, enhance the skills of our county workers so they can perform better at their tasks. perform better at their tasks. There are probably seminars that the universities and the colleges could handle for certain specific departments in the county, such as parks and recreation, for example. Learning about new methods of accessing parks or putting in other things at parks. Until we sit down and have some dialogue with them, we're not really going to know the full extent that we should use them and it must occur.
Okay, thank you. Bill, the next question goes to you first. And this question is, imagine that you have been asked to speak with a business or company that is considering relocating to the county. What would you be willing, what would you tell them about the county to sell it to them? And what promises, if any, would you be willing to make to get them to relocate?
What I would tell them about the county is, we have a workforce that will work harder than anyone else. We have people that want, want the opportunity to do well. And if you come into this county, you're going to have a workforce that's going to show up and work hard for you. But you're also going to have a arts programs that are going to be accessible to your employees. You're going to have a business climate that isn't going to tax you through the roof and push you out of this area. I'm not going to make any promises. What I'm going to do is I'm going to have reduced taxes, which is going to create a climate. People don't realize, the government doesn't create jobs. The government creates a climate that's conducive for jobs to be grown in this area. And I think, as we just touched upon, we have universities, several universities. If people want to come and seek an education here or their children want to go to school here, that's something that we could push. And I'd also like to get a group of people together and bring them with Lorraine and I. You know, we need a group of people to pitch it and I think we could team up with the Chamber of Commerce, who is very good at it, bringing in new businesses. And, and Lorraine has some expertise at being involved with the chamber in the past and I think that her expertise would be very beneficial in, in those types of meetings.
Thank you. Charlie, the question goes to you.
I think a couple of things would occur to enhance. Would you repeat the question though?
The question is, imagine that you've been asked to speak with a business or company.
Networking is a major component of that. When you're going to talk to a company about trying to convince them to come here, how do we sell Lackawanna County to them? Under the current conditions, it's a hard sell because the tax structure's out of whack. We could talk about K O Z zones, but then that's only 10 years of tax abatement. There has to be a consistent approach and they have to feel comfortable that there will be a consistent approach from government so that they can prosper in the climate that government can create. Government can only get in the way in terms of taxation. It can create a better climate for business to prosper, which is, you know, I guess the shorthand way of saying bring in a business can't actually be done. You can, you can lure them in by having the proper conditions and they'll come. They also have to know that we have a terrific scenery. We have a great climate in spite of the long winter. And we would, we have a strong and well, well-educated and reliable workforce, which is something that would be critical. So other than restructuring the taxes, which is a major hurdle for any business, and most of our businesses here are not large corporations, they're mom and pop retail stores, kind of like the, the store that my father used to run in West Side many, many years ago. Those feel the burden of an out of whack tax structure more so than a large company, especially a company that might relocate to a K O Z zone. So we want to make businesses feel comfortable coming here with the assets that we have in terms of the, the landscape, the workforce, the education structure with all the colleges and the universities. But also, we don't want to forget about the mom and pop retail stores that dot every main part of our county, every main street.
Thank you. Lorraine, the question goes to you.
Well, once Bill and I are commissioners, we'll be able to lower those tax rates and entice more businesses to come here. But in addition to that, what, what company looks for when they're looking to relocate is first taxes, second real estate, and what type of programs are offered through the chamber? And they usually go through the chamber. I would love to make sure that all of our chambers, we have the Chamber of Commerce here in Scranton, but we also have many others. Greater Northeast Chamber is the one that I was on the board of. And we offered incentives like business-to-business discounts, you know, helping with networking. We had network mixers and items like that. But that's where I would refer them to, is to the great work that the chambers that we currently have are doing. And I think with our arts and cultures as well, and the parks and recreations that we have, that's, that's a huge item that we can utilize. I know Clark Summit has, what do you have there, Bill? A walkway?
Oh, yes, yeah. Water park.
In the Abbotons Water Park. I mean, it's just enormous. The area is beautiful. We have the most beautiful area in Pennsylvania, as far as I'm concerned, especially in the winter. I know it's cold, but some of the views are awesome and the mountains are just amazing here. So I think that enthusiasm is also helpful when you're trying to bring people in and get them the help that they need to move here and relocate. The families that we have here are amazing. We have such a close network of people. Everyone's willing to help. That's something that you can't hide in this area. Everyone seems to care about everyone else and that's something that just shines through in our area. And you can't hide that. And that's something that's such a positive thing about where we live and I'm so proud of the area that we're in. And I think that that's a, something that everybody looks at when they think of Lackawanna County is how family-oriented we are here.
Okay, thank you. Charlie, this next question goes to you first. At least two people have mentioned winter. Those of us who have driven on the roads recently have our own opinion of winter and what happens. So following along with that, give me your assess, assessment of the current state of the county's public works, the roads, the bridges, the buildings and the grounds. Do they have what they need to maintain the county? And if not, what's the solution for that? Charlie, your question.
Well, a couple of things that the county needs to step up and seek ways to partner with our municipalities to help them and help the county. Where the county is strictly responsible for some bridges and some roads, perhaps sharing with the townships and the municipalities in the county will help enhance those roads. Now, there are lots of bridge reconstructions going on. There are programs at the state level that will help with that. But specifically, if the county would work with municipalities to bring about economies of scale, we could enhance the purchase of the construction materials and maybe regularize the maintenance of those roads and, and maybe fill some of the potholes still.
Okay, thank you. Lorraine, the question to you.
Well, I'm happy to see that Music is finally going to be getting their bridge this year. You can tell it's an election year, huh? You know, I've been really upset about that one, I have to tell you. We have some of the worst roads and they're getting worse, especially when you have detours going through different towns that even stretch into Luzerne County. I mean, when you're looking at the Music Bridge, you're talking about a detour that goes from Bernie Avenue all the way down to York Avenue and then back down. You know, we have a big U going there and all those roads are getting destroyed. If our county was a little bit more, less in debt, is what I should say, I think we could throw some more money from our general funding over to our roads and bridges. But all of that money comes from the state and we get liquid fuels taxes and, you know, I'd have to get in there and see exactly where all of these monies are going before I can say where they're being utilized and where they're not. Because I mean, I looked at the budget, it's 167 pages long and you'd have to be an accountant to sift through that, which I plan on making sure I sit down and let to do that. But, um, you know, that's a major priority is roads and bridges. I think I hit, what, 50 potholes on my way up here? So, yeah, we'll be working on that diligently.
Bill, what is your assessment of the county public works and what are the solutions?
I think we need to do more with less. I, I think under the roads and bridges, we had a gentleman, Commissioner Bruce Smallcomb, he ran that department very well, very effectively. They actually did a lot of in-house bridge work and, and that was something that he instituted and did a great job. I would want to see something similar to what he did. We need to, to do it in-house, stop going out. But the liquid fuels money is set aside by the state and it comes back. So I, I think we do more with less. And also, you know, Act 89 was just passed last year. It's a transportation bill. There's going to be a tremendous amount of new funds available that I think that the county needs to go to the state level and say, listen, we need more money. You know, put them in a car and drive them here because they'll say, you know what? You're right, you do need more money. There's potholes everywhere. But i- if we go out, we get some grants from the state, use the allocated money under Act 89, which they're building a, a multimodal transportation center with here in, in Lackawanna County. There's funds available. We just, as commissioners, Lorraine and I will go get those funds and make sure they're going to the right projects. You know, also, we'll, we'll make sure that the, the state reps know and the state senators know, listen, we've got potholes here, we've got bridges that are not going, are not up to code. But what the state is doing is a 500, they're doing 500 bridge upgrade and it was a public-private partnership which benefits the Commonwealth. So maybe we look into doing something like that or we look into regionalizing services. Under Bruce Smallcomb, the, the county pulled together several municipalities that they bought a zipper and they, they were able to re-mill the roads and put down better roads. But it was a bunch of municipalities coming together. But I, I think that we're, we're going to have the funds available under Act 89 and Lorraine and I will make sure that they're coming here to Lackawanna County and nowhere else.
Okay, thank you. The next question, Lorraine, will go to you first and I want to move on. And let's talk about the environment. What should the county's role be in ensuring soil, air, and water quality and promoting sustainable land use? Are current county policies and programs effective and what changes, if any, would you make?
Well, I'm looking, we're talking about this today and I'm thinking, I'm not really aware of all the environmental programs that the county has. I know that we've been working to make sure our rivers are clean, but we also work together with that at the state and federal level. So I would have to think about that to get you a better answer.
Okay, thank you, Bill. The question to you.
Well, in my past work with the oil and gas industry, I had the opportunity to work with conservation districts across the state. I've got to see unique things that they're doing to make sure that their colonies are not being polluted. I also had the opportunity to work with Pennsylvania D E P, New Jersey D E P, all the way up to Massachusetts. So I think what we need to do is we need to sit down with the conservation district here in Lackawanna County and say, what can we do and what can we provide for you to make sure that there's no sediment going into our streams? That you're the watchdog and reporting any violations to D E P. And I think we have to, we could sit down with all the conservation districts and everybody can bounce ideas off of each other as to how we can make the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania cleaner and better Commonwealth. And that's my response.
All right, thank you. Charlie, the question goes to you.
Well, I was a founding member of the Lackawanna River Corridor Association and I have a number of friends in Trout Unlimited. We did a lot of work on the bike to tra, the reclaiming the old railroad track that is now a bike trail. In addition to having been a science teacher for half of my career, the environment is not something that's far away from my thoughts almost every time. Every time when I was on the planning commission and even now on the zoning board, when a case comes up, one of the questions that's always asked is what is the effect? There has to be a consistent plan. The Soil Conservation District in Lackawanna County, as well as the private conservancies that maintain and own some of the land, are well worth having to partner with. We need to listen to them at the county level. We need to find out how we can enhance both their mission and the overall protection of the environment for all of our citizens. Nobody wants to drink dirty water. Nobody I know wants to breathe bad air. Nobody I know wants to eat spoiled food from rotten gardens or anything like that. So we need to increase and enhance the partnership. That's where my background in those organizations that I mentioned would, would provide a lot of experience and be able to work on those issues in terms of the environment in our area. Now, I also want to point out one other thing that if the county truly has an $8 million surplus, please share some of it to pave some of those roads.
Okay, thank you. The next question, or Bill, I'm sorry, goes to you first. And this question, let's talk about personnel a little bit. Is it time for the county to review all county jobs for which individuals are appointed to determine if a merit-based hiring process with open competition and guarantees of equal employment opportunity would better serve county residents?
Most definitely. We always need to do better. You know, we need to look at our employment levels too. Something that I had discussed with Lorraine was 5% reduction in county staff through attrition. So as people retire, we, we reduce our payroll. We cross-train people to make sure that they're able to do multiple jobs. We need to save money because we don't have a surplus. No matter what you read in, in the newspaper, there's no surplus. There's $200 million in debt and a debt service of multi-million dollars each year. We need to reduce the taxes and we need to pay down our debt and we need to hire competent people. We don't need to hire people for political jobs. And, and something that Lorraine and I had discussed was the economic department. It, it's a duplication of services and we need to remove the duplication of services and let the private sector, the Chamber of Commerce, do their job. And we as commissioners need to go out and bring in companies and pitch them. And not only pitch them, but say, listen, you know, we're going to be here and we're going to make sure that your taxes are low.
Okay, thank you. Charlie, the question goes to you.
Well, we definitely have to reduce the expenditures by instituting an attrition policy that as people retire, their jobs are either unfulfilled or, and eliminated or cross-trained. That's what I was referring to earlier when I talked about the university. We can enhance the employee's skills so that they can effectively do and be cross-trained. There's no question, and I think all of us agree, that the debt of this county is out of control, that by cutting expenses where and when possible and through personnel, because that's the biggest part of anybody's budget, especially a municipal budget, is personnel and, and benefits. In one tiny little way, I would step out and take the lead on that because as a retired teacher, I won't take the pension or the benefit package offered. So in one small way, that's a way to give back and start setting an example of how we can control our budget.
Okay, thank you. Lorraine, the question to you, please.
Absolutely. I guess it does have to be looked at and we'll work at it.
Okay. I think we have time for one more question before we need to move to the closing statements. Charlie, this question goes to you first. Currently, the Board of Commissioners conducts its open public meetings on Wednesdays at 10:00 a.m. and the time is not necessarily the most convenient for county residents who might want to participate in county government. What would it take for you to advocate for a more citizen-friendly Board of Commissioners meeting time?
I would absolutely, first of all, make myself personally available to individuals and groups who'd like to meet. I'm retired, I have no outside interest, I'll be a full-time commissioner. As I mentioned, I won't take the pension and the benefits, so I'll be available to go to speak, to listen, to have a dialogue. And I would have no problem whatsoever meeting with people at night or on the weekend at their convenience. I want to keep the public informed as to what is going on in the county so that people have a, a sound basis to make their decisions. I would much rather hear how we can than why we can't. You can only hear that by going around and listening. And if we could get the county commissioners to move their meetings to the evening, I would absolutely be in favor of that. There are plenty municipal, municipal buildings where meetings could be held at the convenience of the taxpayers who, after all, are paying the bill.
Okay, thank you. Lorraine, the question to you.
This is something I've been a staunch advocate on and everyone that knows me knows it. The meetings absolutely must be held in the evening hours throughout the year. The meetings absolutely must be held in the evening hours throughout the year, throughout the county, not just in Scranton, but throughout our county. As Chairwoman of the 114th Republican Legislative District, that's what we do, that's how I lead our team. We go to every city in our 114th district and have meetings and involve everyone in the public, so that everybody has an idea of what's happening. And that's something that I was asking for, for about seven years now. Myself and many others in the, in the community have asked the commissioners to do this. The only time that it had happened was when they had to bring it, four hearings out to the public when they were going to increase the taxes, and they did it all in one day. So that's why they had to have them in different areas. And we made sure there were people, people there to hear them. So, you know, I'm a big advocate for citizen, you know, legislating.
Thank you. Bill, the question to you.
Andrea, I would have the meetings in the evenings, and that's something that I had discussed four years ago. And the League of Women Voters said, we will be here to question you on that. The current administration also made that, that commitment.
Please ask.
So I would implore you to ask them about that, and if they can follow up with, with their response, and what's taking them so long. I'd have the meetings in the evening. That's when people can make it. Having the meetings in Scranton on the sixth floor at 10:00 a.m. provides no openness or transparency to the general public. And that's not how business should be done, and that's not how your tax dollars should be spent. What we'll do, Laureen and I, will make department heads available to people at these meetings that are going to be held throughout the county. And they're going to have to answer for, for their budgets, because they're going to have to answer the two of us. So they're going to have to answer to the taxpayers that are going to have tough questions. We're not going to be there to provide smokescreens for them. We need to hold people accountable, and we need to hold our elected officials accountable. And Laureen and I, we will make it to the local municipality meetings. As full-time commissioners that aren't going to take a pension, we're going to lead by example. And we're going to make sure that people see that and they know that. And we'll be, we'll be in the community.
Okay, thank you. Charlie, did I see that you wanted to rebut? No? Okay. That concludes the time that we have for questions, unfortunately. But we do have time for your two-minute closing statements. We drew straws, or names, as the case would be. And Bill, you'll give the first closing statement.
I want to thank the League of Women Voters for having this forum. I'd like to thank E C T V for coming out and broadcasting it for us. As you sit at home, Lackawanna County's, you know, has a pivotal choice to make. We have $200 million in debt, and we have no plan to get out of that. Laureen and I are going to bring a simple plan, and that plan is going to be to reduce your taxes, to pay down the debt, and to lower the unemployment rate. And we think, we know that we can accomplish that in four years. And if, if we can't, then don't vote for us. But we are the endorsed ticket by the local Republican Party here, and we're going to make sure that you have somebody in the commissioner's office that's there and will listen to you. We have private business experience, second to none, and we will make sure that we common-sense govern. And we're going to lead by example. That's it.
Thank you very much. How about a round of applause for Bill Johns? Charlie, your closing statement, please.
My, my closing statement's going to be very simple. I have the experience through all the community activities. I have the qualifications to be a strong leader on the Board of Commissioners. With any one of the people here at this table, on the sixth floor with me, we will be able to turn this county around. Everything we've talked about here tonight, whether it's the environment, or taxes, or cooperation with municipalities, are all things that we can and should pursue. I will be a full-time commissioner. I have no outside interests or distractions. I won't take the pension, I won't take the benefit package. I'll be working for you all the time as a commissioner. If I cannot get term limits passed, and I have an idea for that, I will limit myself to only two terms anyway. I did that before, I'll do it again. In terms of night meetings, just quickly on that, I would want to see our night meetings recorded by E C T V so that people could get a viewing of it again afterwards, if they wanted to, and replay it multiple times on the channel. But to summarize, from my background in leadership as a chairman or president of over 10 community organizations, as a principal, with 34 years supporting the Republican Party and Republican candidates, ranging from committee man to president of the United States, I believe I have the breadth of experience, the knowledge, the education, and the qualifications to be an effective county commissioner, working full-time for you.
Thank you, Charlie. How about a hand of, round of applause? And finally, Laureen, your closing statement, please.
Well, thank you to the Women's League of Voters, and thank you to E C T V, and thank you for the times, and the Channel 28, and any other news people that are here. I greatly appreciate you coming to record our remarks and to listen to what the Republican Party has to say. You are looking at the new Republican Party sitting up here between the three of us. We are here to try and help our county and our districts. We are running for this office to help a county that is currently in severe debt, overtaxed, homes being lost for no reason. We can fix this. We know what to do. As business leaders in the community, we have been challenged, we've met those challenges, and we have our proven ability to do it. Please, I implore you to make sure that you think very carefully this year when you're voting. We have got to do something about the debt we're in. We cannot have our children leaving this area to go somewhere else for a job. We must be vigilant and bring back Lackawanna County to the wonderful place that we know it is. Please make sure that you get out to vote this year. Watch what your Republican Party's doing. Listen to what the candidates are saying and telling you. We are here to fix this. That's what we want to do. No, we're not going to take a pension, because we aren't here for a job. We are here as a community leader, trying to fix problems that past politicians have destroyed and broken. Let us help this county. Look to us to help, and we will fix it. That is our promise to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Laureen Cummings, everyone. How about a round of applause for all of our candidates for their commitment to democracy? Thank you all for being here with us this evening as we debated with the candidates for, the Republican candidates for Lackawanna County Commissioner. Again, we're the League of Women Voters of Lackawanna County. We invite you to join us. There's a membership application in your program this evening. If you support the work we do, we invite you to make a financial contribution in the basket on the way out. It helps cover our costs. I want to thank the University of Scranton, the Political Science Department, and also E C T V for their support of all that we do. Don't forget that May 12th is the last date to request an absentee ballot. May 19th is Election Day, and there are several judicial races on the ballot. Pennsylvania Supreme Court candidates will be debating in conjunction with the League of Women Voters of Pennsylvania and the Pennsylvanians for Modern Courts. And you can check that programming out on the Pennsylvania Cable Network. So, thank you again for joining us this evening, and I hope to see you out at the polls on Election Day.